Good morning and welcome to the First July Meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. This is a public meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call on any interested attendee if there is a question or comment on any action item that is before the Board today. For those of you who are here to listen to the presentation that we requested from the Town Planner concerning proposed text amendments, that is a presentation to the Board for our purposes of understanding the nature of why that is being proposed. We are not taking comments. We do not have authority on the subject. What we do have is ideally our persuasion in requesting delay in taking action by the Planning and Zoning Commission on the subject, which we've already done. So I just want to be direct and upfront with everybody who's in attendance that our actions already through a letter dated June 27th requested that the proposed text amendments be withdrawn from the July 10 P&amp;Z meeting and that they be further resubmitted and taken up in October. That letter was dated June 27th, signed by all three Selectmen. In the intervening period, of course, we feel it's incumbent upon us to understand what those changes are. So I just want to let you know, we have received numerous amount of feedback from the public, from all of you. Certainly, we are sharing that with the Commission. And again, we'll appeal to the Commission through its Chairman to delay, but I just wanted to be upfront before we get into the other business of the meeting and let you know that. There are copies of the meeting agenda as you come in. Today has one matter of old business and two presentations under new business, one from our town information technology, although you have a new title now, CIO. Yeah, you got it right. And I'm drawing a blank. We went through this chief. Thank you. Chief. You know, many chiefs, no Indians, Chief Information Officer. Thank you. And so we'll be having a presentation from the Town Planner. And then at that time, Mr. DeLuca can perhaps explain, we had requested the Chairman of the Commission come before us in our letter. Correct me if I am wrong, but my understanding is because these matters are presently active before the Commission, members are judicious and not wanting to prejudice their view in advance of any decision that is made, so therefore they don't want to comment outside the public meeting and hearings of the Commission. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is approval of minutes from the meeting that was held on June 27th. At this time, entertain any corrections, amendments to those minutes. If there are none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So move.
With that objection. Terms of updates pursuant to the provisions in the Charter, which requires that the Board of Selectmen meet, hold at least one meeting per month, and that the first Selectmen update the other Selectmen on any matters that are pertinent or germane. Just wanted to begin by saying that over the last week, we were very pleased to participate, Sandy and I, in the July 4th celebration here at Town Hall by the Greenwich Independence Day Association. This was the 14th year that this event occurred. Incorporated in this event were several elements that focus on the town's history, both pre-colonial history, colonial history, and then the speaker from Greenwich High School sharing with us the diaries of a young woman who wrote about the First World War and its impact on her and those men who served during that time. So it was a very deeply meaningful event, aside from the celebration of the birth of the country, and we were delighted to be there. And John, I know you had another commitment, but are always there for these events. In addition, this past week, I was able to swear in John Kirn to be one of the Deputy Fire Marshals. Mr. Kirn has a unique history. He retired from the Greenwich Police Department and then went on to become a firefighter, now Fire Inspector, and then elevated to a vacant position as Deputy Fire Marshal. So he is a face you would see in terms of inspection of buildings, both residential and public, and we certainly wish him well in his new role. On Monday, there will be a meeting of the First Selectmen's Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities in Greenwich. I want to thank Alan Gunsberg, who is a member of that committee, as well as a member of the Human Services Commission for taking a leadership role. One of the areas of focus for the group has been compliance with the American with Disabilities Act and a focus on not only town facilities, but facilities that are hosting various events. So one of the topics that we'll be looking at is talking to the Board of Education, the Registrar Voters, Parks and Rec. That meeting is at 9:30 and it's in the Department of Human Services Conference Room on the third floor of Town Hall. Yesterday, there was a meeting of the First Selectmen's Economic Advisory Committee. Several initiatives taking place there. This is the second year that the Think Greenwich Public Relation Initiative is underway. The volunteers are working not only with Lou Hammond Group, but amongst themselves to further advance that initiative through the website is now up. One of the elements of the website is to focus on people within the community who have done extraordinary things and have been in the news, profiling anybody who's locally stood out, students, particularly, I believe, one of the first interviews that was undertaken with some of our students in our schools, but certainly residents that have brought notoriety not only to themselves, but the town. There'll be some other visible forms of exposure for this over the next several months. The second item we discussed is the Greenwich Economic Forum Conference Update. This is something that we've been working on for over a year. It is scheduled for November 16th and 17th at the Delmar Hotel, as well as venue at the Teen Center, Indian Harbor Yacht Club. The focus of the event is to hear from industry leaders in the topic of finance, trade. It will be taking place after the midterm elections, so we anticipate we'll be able to ascertain a perspective on what that means in the relation to national policy. Ray Dalio has committed to be one of the lead speakers, along with Paul Tudor Jones and several others, and we're looking to really expand beyond just economic to other industry-type leadership. So we're very excited about it. It's being all privately funded and sourced. The only costs are the time and attention that I'm giving to it, which really in my mind is to, one, find out, two, what's happening in this industry. We know there's been a lot of changes over the last several years, and it'd be great to hear from these folks about what truly is taking place. In addition, again, independent really of the town, Tammy Kettler, through her initiative of TMK Sports Entertainment, is undertaking Experience Greenwich Week. This is a whole townwide economic development enhancement initiative to promote retail stores, restaurants, and businesses. It will incorporate Greenwich, Byram, Cosco, Riverside, and Old Greenwich. She's got media partners, News 12, The Advocate, Greenwich Time, local radio stations, and it is designed to really create focus and attention on the community, really from, you know, post Labor Day, the Food and Wine Fest, into October, leading up to the Economic Forum, and then we get into the holidays. So really what trying to create is constant activity. I do want to thank my colleagues who were enthusiastic about doing something. Sandy, you were very interested, and this is really an offshoot in some respects of your ideas as well, and I applaud them because they're all volunteers from our side, so all the best to them. The Holiday Stroll is another event that has occurred. It's taking place December 1st and 2nd, again, throughout the town. And then finally, something new that I applaud them with, I wish them well with this, Winter Sale and Giving Days. This is to benefit not only Think Greenwich, but also several of the human service organizations. It's an opportunity for merchants to promote the sale of their post-holiday inventories, and Tammy, again, has indoctrinated this as an initiative. So we talked about that, and then, again, anybody who has an idea as to a speaker for this forum, I'm open to it. Please don't be bashful. Again, from across disciplines, not just finance, we certainly want to have a real balance and diversity of speakers, not only from industry, but through, obviously, you know, socio-economic gender. Some local events coming up next week. There'll be the Bastille's Day Celebration here, out on the front steps on Saturday. It's an annual event run by the Alliance Francais that begins at 9:00 a.m. The Greenwich Point Conservancy is once again holding their beach ball this weekend to continue to raise funds to improve, renovate the historic buildings out at Greenwich Point. On Sunday, there's the First Congregational Church of Old Greenwich's annual Founder's Day recognition, and it's the issuance of the proclamation every year out there at 10:00 a.m. On Monday, there'll be a promotion ceremony here for four fire lieutenants. This is a result of approval in the budget for staffing the tower ladder out of the Central Station with a lieutenant. All of our engines that run out of our six town stations have three personnel. Central has an engine with three and a ladder with four. One of the personnel on the ladder will now be a lieutenant, and that was initiative within our budget, and the reason for it is to provide equity in span of control and accountability at the fire scenes. And then finally, on Founder's Day, Wednesday, July 18th, there'll be a celebration at 10:00 a.m. at the Feek Ferris House, which is over in Old Greenwich. This has now been documented as the oldest home structure within the town of Greenwich. For those of you who have frequented Greenwich Point recently, you will perhaps notice it as you wind the curve on Shore Road. The house pretty much is right there with a fence in front of it, with a more modern home behind it. It was saved from the wrecking ball through some entrepreneurial spirit, and we're going to celebrate this year's town founding at that location. That concludes the updates. Under old business today, we have received at our last meeting a request for municipal improvement for the addition of 51 units of senior disabled housing at the McKinney Terrace Development, which is at the former Byram School in Western Greenwich. The Housing Authority presented in detail their proposed development, which is in keeping with the direction of the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development, which encouraged additional non-market rate housing for employees, but seniors in particular, with the aging of our population. This particular development will, as conceived, will double the number of units of senior housing at that location. It is within the existing footprint of the property that the town leased in 1984 for 99 years and is frankly, from what we saw, a very tasteful and functional facility. By practice, I have always held MI improvements over two meetings to give folks an opportunity to comment. I do not know of any other comments and a handful that I received in support of this. I don't know if you gentlemen received any. So I do know that Mr. Johnson, who's the Executive Director, as well as Mr. Romeo, who's the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, are here. I don't have any further questions for you about it. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the request for municipal improvement for the addition of 51 units at the McKinney Terrace/Byram School property.
I will so move.
It's been moved by Mr. Lippback, seconded by Mr. Toner. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to you in the first phase of the approval process. Your next step will be to the planning and zoning.
I'd just like to thank the Board of Selectmen and for your confidence and support of us creating the senior housing, which is solely needed in this town, as the demographics will substantiate that there is a green community, and we need to provide the senior housing and disabled housing here. We'd just like to thank you for your vote of confidence in the Board and our board, my board, and residents of the town of Greenwich. I want to thank you for your support.
You're welcome. And again, I just want to reiterate, I think one of the things we learned in terms of your financing this, since there's an audience here, is that it's primarily privately financed. The town of Greenwich itself, for those who are here and listening, has no economic commitment or responsibility. It's exclusively privately financed through your organization. Okay, under new business, our Chief Information Officer, Mr. Klein, is here. I requested this at our last meeting because one of the more frankly frequent realities is that we're in a technological age. We have been in that. We are looking to do more through the use of technology to ease the business of government. Mr. Klein has been now in your position, what, four years, three years?
This is my fifth year.
Fifth year. So he's been undertaking a lot of different initiatives within his domain, but one of them is a total upgrade to the town's website. Given that this is the Executive Board of the Town, and we do frequently get a lot of interaction through email or questions about services, I thought it'd be beneficial for us to have an understanding as to what you're doing, why you're doing it, how it's going to improve upon what we have, and what other elements can be expanded on in the future. So at this time, I turn it over to you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to come up here. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So I'm going to mostly talk about what you see on the bottom, the new website platform, and you can think of it as a new website. That'll be in next month, but it's part of a larger initiative that we're calling the Integrated Town Hall Initiative. So I'm not going to talk about the whole initiative for, because there's just not enough time to do that right now. So I'm going to talk about the pieces in red, but I will say that the Integrated Town Hall Initiative is, it's a multi-year initiative. There's multiple capital projects involved, multiple phases, and what I'm going to talk about now is the new website platform, which is the first piece of this, the most visible piece, really. And again, August 8th, and I'll get into more detail about exactly what happens on August 8th, but I'm going to discuss a little bit about the background, the decision to go ahead, the goals, the scope. I want to talk about content, process design, technology, you know, the actual platform, what you can expect. I'll discuss costs, and I'll take questions. So the background of the town's website goes back to the 1990s with, you know, a very simple message board that was very technology-oriented, needed to be maintained by, you know, one or two people. And then we get into 2002, was sort of the next version of the website, which had a little bit more, I show up there, CMS, Content Management System. So it just began to offer the ability to, for people to come in and not be technical to change the content of the website. The version we're in now is actually the third version. It launched in 2012, and it was built from the ground up. However, all the old content was migrated to the new site, and it had a new content management system, and currently, IT maintains the hardware, software, and network. The departments are responsible for content, but very few people use the CMS. The majority of departments depend on a webmaster, a single person, to make all those changes. So the decision to go ahead really with bringing in a new website was, began with some requests for funding, working with the BET, working with the Board of Selectmen, and we asked for, to do a study and to update the website, update the design. So, and we reviewed the survey results, and we presented a plan, and we began work last year. So the survey, I'll just share, the survey was very detailed, but I'll share one page from it, because this is my favorite page. But it was just a sampling of what people think of the current website, and it's more of an unsupervised bulletin board than a carefully curated presentation of the town's services and its government. And you can read the others, but more or less, the biggest concerns were about content, how it was presented, how you can find content. So the goal of the new website, and a new website, by the way, would be called GreenwichCT.gov, really to create a modern branded unified web presence. So to provide a platform for, I think the most important piece is for departments to share relevant news and content with the public. So it's really about opening it up, not to one or two people to manage the website, but to many, many departments. I also want to share with you the scope. So when you go to the website right now, there's the homepage you go to, there are many pages for each department. That's the core website. If you veer off and go to pay your taxes, or go for a beach pass, or somewhere else, you're leaving the core site. So the scope of this initial next month website change is really targeted at the green areas, which is mostly core with two smaller applications that IT maintains, very simple for us to change. But the rest of them will be revisited in the future, because like I said, this is a first step. A website itself, you know, so our core website is really, think of it as four things. There's a technology component, there's a design component, there's a process, and the largest piece is content. So in my mind, content is the most important part of a website. You go to the website for content. And our website currently has more than 200 sections, almost 3,000 webpages, 2,100 documents, 700 images. So it's a very big website in terms of content. The important piece of content, about content, is has to be relevant, and technology will not make that content relevant. It needs people to do that. And not only people, but a process. So content goes through a creation phase, a publishing phase, promotion phase, where you show that on the website. It needs to be maintained, and it needs to be retired at some point, and that's all part of the process. So the biggest change that's going to happen on August 8th, besides design changes and technical changes, is that we're going to have many, many more people maintaining the content, and they're called content stewards. So we're going to have 40-plus content stewards. These are people from departments that are being trained right now to use the new website. And all the feedback I'm getting is that it's easy to use, and they're excited about it, and they're talking about their webpages and how they're going to change them, and also come August, it's not going to be, okay, we made our changes and we're done. It's now a living, breathing website where these same content stewards can change things. They can say, hmm, I'm being asked the same question, maybe we should put it on the website. And so I think what's going on here is we're trying to make everything more relevant by getting people who are closest to the content able to directly change that. So we also have a digital content editor, and that's somebody that can look at the whole website as a, you know, a homepage, and stylistically, how does everything fit together, oversee, for instance, ADA, we talked about, just talked, Peter talked about that, to make sure that it is compliant and content is meeting those standards, but also to edit the homepage, promote things within the website, to say, hey, this is important. So it's really to give a whole cohesion to the website. So let me also share with you what it's going to look like, the design piece of it. So this is a sneak peek of the homepage. Now, the picture might change. In fact, the picture will change as news items change, and this will be the content editor's job to say, let's promote a new news item, but let's get a picture in there, and let's make it more compelling. There'll be multiple sections, if you look on the bottom. Excuse me. And actually, if you look on the side, there's subsections. So there's, it's hard for me to read right here, but land use and parks and rec and public works, those are the subsections of the website. It's also responsive, and what that means is if you're looking at it on a desktop, it's going to look different than if you're looking at it on your phone, and it's just automatic. And so it's useful in a big screen and also useful on a small screen. The technology, excuse me, technology we're bringing in is a company called Civic Plus. All they do is municipality websites, so it's not as though we're taking something and trying to customize it for Greenwich. We're taking something that's used at 2,700 municipalities, a platform, and making it work for us by training content stewards to take a step up and really make content It's more than a website, it's a platform, so there's many components that we will use some from day one, but we will also work into some of the others as we move along. So not sure whether there's going to be slide shows from day one, but I do know by the fall that I think a lot of content stewards will say, hey, we want to, you know, bring in a slideshow, or we want to create, there will certainly be electronic forms, but each content steward can create more electronic forms. So I think what you will see, certainly from day one, is some electronic forms, and I think as we move on, you will see more. So all this comes down to, what do you expect on August 8th? Well, first and foremost, know that this is the first step. You will definitely see a new website platform. The website will look different, it will have different navigation, the content will be on its way to being more relevant. I think even from the beginning, all the content stewards are revisiting their content now, so it will be more relevant, it'll be mobilely optimized, better navigation, improved ADA, and as I said before, greater departmental participation, refresh content, guided contact, that's an important piece, too. We're getting away from, let's just list a bunch of numbers and people and have people guess which one they should call, and it's much more deliberate where the content stewards can say, contact us, and prescribe where that, where that contact should go. So I think that's going to be a big change and a good change. It's going to be more solution-oriented, how do I do something? And again, we're going to have some online forums, some, probably about 10 as we start off, but I could see many more as we move along. So, yes. So at noon on August 8th, if you type in GreenwichCT.org, you will be forwarded to GreenwichCT.gov, and it'll be the new website. The old GreenwichCT.org website won't be available anymore, but it will be archived internally so that really anybody on staff can get to it. So if we ever want to say, hey, it used to be on the old website, somebody can reference Each page will have a link, again, I said this before, but a link where if you have an issue about the page or a question about the content, there'll be a form you can fill it out, and it will get to the right person. This comes up a lot. People ask me about email. Email will not be imp- Email will not be impacted, it's still first name, last name at GreenwichCT.org. So if I look at the whole initiative for everything we're going to do in the future, there's mul, and I mentioned this before, there's multiple capital projects. But this one has been mostly funded with the website redesign funding that we asked for back in 2016. And, and as we make more changes, we, we will tap other capital funding. So for example, online permitting is very, while it's online, it involves very specific systems. And so you, we'll see the results of something online, but to, in order to get that, there are a lot of backend systems that have to be changed. So it's a completely different initiative from a backend perspective. But I included it here so you see that as we bring more things online and make the website or our web presence more interactive, it just involves many initiatives. For steps after August 8th, so late 2018, 2019, 2020, we are going to work on making the platform, the Civic Plus platform more efficient with more forms, newsletters, photo galleries, bid posting. We're going to incorporate Access Greenwich into a module here, which is request tracking module. And we're look to integrate and improve other partner websites like beach cards and payments, establish personalization where you can log in and improve, bring in online permitting and online meeting room scheduling. So that's what you'll see in the future, not on August, but as we move along. So that's that. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to. John?
Why is it the Board of Education is separate from the Town of Greenwich?
Well, Board of Education structurally is different than, than the Town of Greenwich, same as the library. And so they have, I think they have their own needs and their own communication and their own departments and so it's, it's been set up that way. I think it would be, it would be a very different initiative if we brought Board of Ed in and with those departments and, and especially because they just, I would say about a year ago, put in a new website. So I don't know if there was an appetite to revisit that again.
Tom, can you just elaborate a little bit more on the Access Greenwich application and how that's going to integrate into the new system?
Sure.
And timing for that?
Okay. So Access Greenwich is enabled through a product called Public Stuff, which is an application. The way Civic Plus works is they have a module for citizen request tracking, very similar. I would say the only difference is there's not an application. And because the website's responsive, you don't really need an application anyway. So it's, it's, it will be more seamless in that you can go to the web, the town website, say, I want to report a problem, webpage will come up, it doesn't make you load an app, you can still take pictures of, of what the issue is. And, and activating that is really, the tasks involve taking the departments that are using Public Stuff right now and moving them onto this new platform and then bringing the other departments on. But, but what I like about it too is it's also, it incorporates, it's the same place the content stewards can go to change their content, can also be the place they can go to manage issues that come in. So it becomes one place for, for interaction.
So on August 9th, if you have a dead tree limb that fell in your yard from a town property and you want to go online to report it, what will happen?
Still Access Greenwich. So, so we, we're not, we're not changing that part of it. So if you go to the website, it'll say, you know, you want to report something, you will still go to the, it'll, it'll show the same Access Greenwich as it does now.
But when will it incorporate into the new platform?
I'm working with the town administrator on that right now and we're looking at the fall for that. And it's mostly because we, we have to move two departments that are actively using the current system. And so there's just logistics. If we could have just turned this on, but I didn't want to have then two systems working at the same time.
I don't think there's any other questions. I would just say good luck to you and we're pleased that we're further modernizing and facilitating information. I do want to thank our partners on the BET and the RTM for supporting the funding of the initiative. And really, it falls under a larger umbrella of the whole community first initiative that began in '11, which involved not only customer service training, leadership training, but process improvement. And this is contributory to that overall endeavor. So thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item to come before us is a presentation on proposed zoning text amendments. Just by way of background to reiterate a little bit of what I said at the outset of the meeting, on June 26th, I attended a meeting with several representatives of neighborhood associations, I see several are here, as well as our town planner Katie DeLuca, to review what in fact these amendments are. What are they designed to do? What implications will they have? Ms. DeLuca went through it very thoroughly at the time. Subsequently, I reported out to my colleagues at our meeting, which was the next day, that this had surfaced as a major concern on the part of residents. And they too received communications expressing interest and concern about the subject. We collectively and unanimously submitted a letter to the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission requesting they withdraw the application and regarding the text amendment, which was scheduled to be taken up at their July 10th, 2018 meeting. We further requested that they resubmit it for consideration by the commission in October. We did so because we believe that there were various communities, including our board and the RTM Land Use Committee, that wanted to learn about and educate ourselves and residents on the proposed amendments contained in the application. We also requested and invited the chair of the commission to attend our meeting today. And so that brings us full circle to how we got to where we are today. The response, again, as I reiterate at the beginning of the meeting, was for Ms. DeLuca to come as the town planner in staff to inform us. Our role is limited, as reiterated, our, we have no legal authority over the subject. We do have the responsibility to nominate citizens to the Planning and Zoning Commission the RTM appoints. And that really is part and parcel of our role. So at this time, thank you Katie, of course, for being here. And we intend to have you present the whole thing and then we'll ask any questions at the end.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for having me. And to, just to reiterate again, the Planning and Zoning Commission, you won't see any of the members, members here because of the point that you raised. It's not that they're not interested in this or don't want to be a part of it, of course, but all of our applications that go before the Planning and Zoning Commission are based on establishing a record. And we have a mechanism to do that, and that is done through either you coming to the public hearings and speaking at a public hearing, or submitting written comments. So for them to come to a meeting like this would be outside of that scope. So that's, that's why you won't see them here. So for anyone who is at home, I've put my email at the top of all the slides coming forth. So if you'd like to email me with any comments, please do so. You can find the text amendment on our website, GreenwichCT.org, soon to be changing as we've just heard, but for right now, it's still CT.org. And again, the public hearing will be on July 24th in this room at 7:00. So just to give you a broad overview of what we're doing, the purpose of the amendment is administrative in part and substantive in part. So the administrative part of this is really to reduce the liability to the town. And the substantive part is to protect our neighborhoods by promoting the desirable land uses that are mentioned repeatedly in our 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development. So many of you know, we're in the process of updating that, but right now, the 2009 plan, the one approved by the RTM is the one that is in play. And these are some of the things that were noted in that plan. Preservation of our historic structures, we know they, they contribute so much to our community character. Keeping our residential neighborhoods intact, neighborhood schools, neighborhood fire stations, these are all things that are mentioned in the POCD. And of course, ensuring that we have excellent schools and that they can grow the way they need to. We know that we want that, not just of course for the, for our children, but for our own property values, which are so intrinsically tied to how, the health of our schools. So just on the first part of the amendment, what we are looking to do is change our zoning regulations so that we determine which board reviews what we call special exception uses and special permit uses. Under the law, there's no difference between these uses. What we've, what we do in Greenwich is we've determined, as noted in our zoning regulations, that there are certain uses that we call special exception uses that the zoning board of appeals should review. And there are certain uses that we call special permit uses that we've determined the Planning and Zoning Commission should review. So what you'll see here are the special exception uses, and in a minute, I'll show you what the special permit uses is. Common special exception uses are religious and educational institutions and clubs, car washes, museums. What you'll see in red down at the bottom here are a couple of uses, motor vehicle repair, sales and service, and accessory structures. Those, the, the first part, motor vehicle repair, sales and service are required under the state statutes to have the zoning board of appeals review those. So that's why they are not, they are not part of this proposal, they will stay with the zoning board of appeals. Special permit uses, things like group daycare homes, resident medical professional offices, supermarkets, those go under the Planning and Zoning Commission. The problem that we have is in these red words down here, which are taken from our zoning regulations. What they say is that when you have structures, structure or structures that are in excess of a certain size in the commercial zones and a certain size in the residential zones, these uses also require, require a special permit. So what you can have is you can have special exception uses that also are over a certain size, therefore triggering a special permit use. So what you end up having, based on the way our zoning regulations are set up, is you have a system whereby one has to submit to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the zoning board of appeals. That's about a 12-month plus process when you get through all of that. And therein lies the conflict. Because what you effectively have are a set of standards under the zoning regulations that the commission uses to review the special permit, and you have a set of standards that the zoning board of appeals reviews that has their own set of standards. Barbara, I just handed you a couple of pieces of paper, if you wouldn't mind handing them to the, to the selectmen. What that, what I'm handing you are the zoning regulations that describe, of those standards. So you'll see under the first part, under 6-17, there are several standards in there, and I've highlighted the ones that are very, very close to these standards under the zoning board of appeals standards under 6-20. Things like ensuring that we have appropriate traffic, that the, that the, that the uses are compatible with the neighborhood. So as I mentioned, these are special uses. So every zone has allowable uses. So if you're in a residential zone, those are the zones where you can have residential structures. And it's been determined that you can have certain other uses subject to this review process. Other uses being schools, we have many of them in residential areas, religious institutions likewise in residential areas. However, they are different than residential homes, therefore they are what we call the special exception or special permit, which are synonymous under the law. And the reason that we have, the, the application process for either one of those is our most difficult application process in town. So you don't just go to the building department with your new school and submit for a building permit. You have to go through a lengthy public hearing process, you have to be able to submit documentation to show that this is compatible with the location where you're going. And it is a public hearing process and for good reasons, so that people can come and speak at these meetings. So the, the issue of having this conflict where you're having two boards reviewing the, the same, you know, the same project, one for use and one for size, with very, very similar standards, is the legal conflict. Other issues that are secondary to this point include that the Planning and Zoning Commission has a staff of six full-time and one part-time planners. The zoning board of appeals staff has one zoning enforcement officer. When an application comes in for special permit, we write a staff report, we have a briefing meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission the day before, we send the application out to all of the applicable town departments, including outside consultants. We have a traffic consultant that we have readily available to us that we send projects to regularly, and we do a review. When an application comes in for a special exception, they, that application is presented that evening to the zoning board of appeals. They don't have this extensive process associated with the application before the meeting. So that's just, it's just a more efficient way to have the Planning and Zoning Commission that has the staff and the manpower to handle this, to review these applications. And as I mentioned before, there's, there's some timing issues, because when one comes in now, they come in for preliminary site plan special permit, takes about four months. Then they go to the zoning board of appeals for their special exception, another four months, and then back to planning and zoning first for a final site plan and special permit, another four months. So now it would just be to the, to the one board. The reason that we have noted that this is a liability is we were challenged on this actually, about three years ago. And it was an application that followed that process I just described. They went to the Planning and Zoning Commission and it was approved by the commission. Then it went to the zoning board of appeals and it was denied by them. And then it ended up getting settled out. However, you can see that there is a conflict and this point was a point of contention within that application. I'm going to talk more about that in just a second, because after I get to my next point. So that's the issue with the, with the procedural, the, with why we want to change the uses that go before the zoning board of appeals to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The second thing that we want to do is, under the standards that I gave you before, if you'll note, under standard number one, under 6-17, and standard number one, under 6-20, it says that, that the application should, should be in keeping with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Which on the face of it, of course, we want all of our applications to be in keeping with the Plan of Conservation and Development, because it is the document that is, that establishes the vision for the community. The community as a whole wrote the document, the RTM approves the document, it is, it is used heavily with our capital improvement plan, it is the guiding force for our community. However, it is not a regulatory document. Very important, it is a vision document. Our zoning regulations are a way to implement that vision. That's where we tell the community at large what their setbacks are, what their height is, what their floor area ratio is. That is what the Planning and Zoning Commission uses when they review applications. They only use the zoning regulations. When one goes to court, to, when an application's been challenged, the judge does not say, is this in keeping with your plan? The judge says, does this comply with your zoning regulations? Which is what the Planning and Zoning Commission and the zoning board of appeals are charged with doing. In those standards, I just want to, just want to note something, because I know this is a point of confusion that actually came up at that last meeting. We are a planning and zoning commission. Many towns in the state of Connecticut have a separate planning commission and a separate zoning commission. We are married for very, very good reason and a very important reason. And it goes back to this relationship between the vision and the implementation. Planning, we have our authority, the Planning and Zoning Commission has their authority from the town charter. That's what it means when it says, when we talk about being a home rule community. That's the town charter. Under, in the charter, it tells the Planning and Zoning Commission what their job is, which is to write this Plan of Conservation and Development, it describes what that's about. Plan of Conservation and Development. It describes what that's about. It talks about municipal improvements, and it talks about subdivisions. That's, that's the planning function of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So when, when the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews municipal improvements only, that is the only time that the Planning and Zoning Commission is using the plan to determine whether something is in keeping. That's because of the way the charter is set up. Separate and apart is the zoning side of things. The Planning and Zoning Commission gets their power to, to regulate through the Connecticut general statutes on the zoning side. And the zoning regulations, as I mentioned, are a way to implement the Plan of Conservation and Development, this vision. So it goes from the bigger picture, the plan, and then here are the specifics of how you implement the plan, as detailed in the zoning regulations. So again, when the Planning and Zoning Commission is reviewing applications, they're determining whether they are in compliance with the zoning regulations. So just to give you an example here, the POCD may say, "We want the best schools. We want to protect our neighborhoods." The zoning regulations would determine what the heights are, what the setbacks are, what the FAR is for the schools. And then an application would come in, and the Planning and Zoning Commission would be charged with determining whether that application complies with the zoning regulations. The, the lawsuit that I mentioned previously from a few years ago, when it went to the Zoning Board of Appeals, it happened to be for a religious institution. When it went to the Zoning Board of Appeals, one of the board members looked at the standards and looked at the first standard, and it said, "Be in keeping with the Plan of Conservation and Development." And they said, "Well, in the plan, it says, 'Maintain traditional development patterns.'" And that person determined, which they had the right to do, that they did not believe that this religious institution was in keeping with a traditional development pattern. And that was one of the reasons that they chose to vote against this proposal. As I mentioned, we settled it out. However, because it was a religious institution, and that the town opted at that time to hire outside counsel to deal with a very specific act that, that deals with religious institutions, to the tune of 90,000-plus. So just to give you an idea of the liability that we are, that we have with the way that things are set up now. Okay, so moving, moving on. In the plan, the 2009 Plan, we talk a lot about, again, maintaining traditional development patterns, maintaining community character, maintaining neighborhood. That's what, that's our vision for the town. That's what we want. And part of that is historic preservation. If you've been following the happenings of planning and zoning, you'll know that we, that the commission just approved a big change to the historic overlay section, so as to provide additional incentives to a property owner, so that when an application comes that is 1940 or previous, goes to the Historic District Commission, they determine whether it's worthy for, they review it to, to review whether it's appropriate for them to apply incentives. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission, through this special permit, again, the most difficult application type in town, through the special permit, whether or not it is, it is worthy to, to be approved. One of the additional incentives that was added recently was that there would be an FAR increase available for one to apply for, not get as of right, but apply for, under the special permit, for residential homes. And in the RA4 and the RA2 zone, the back country, if you will, that was a 25% increase, and in the lower zones, it was a 15% increase. What we're doing with this proposal is to allow the special exception slash permit uses that might apply under this historic overlay to also be afforded that, the ability to request that FAR bump. So the incentive that exists now is for, again, the special permit, special exception uses to come in. And if the commission decides to go forward with the previous change, this section needs to be changed. So it's, it's really just to be in keeping with the first part there, and to add this FAR business. Okay. The second, the second part of the regulation proposal has to do with schools. And the proposal is to increase the floor area permitted for educational institutions, public and private and residential zones. And when I say educational institutions, I'm talking about schools. I'm not talking about a use that gives classes every once in a while, such as a museum. I'm talking about an educational institution. And the reason that we want to do that is that there are several schools, including our own high school, that doesn't have any FAR available to them. The high school is in the R20 and in the RA1 zone, and it has no ability to expand at all. They can't even put a garden shed. In fact, they're 72,000 square feet over what they're permitted now, and they were granted that through, through variance. And the, the school facilities plan, as I'm sure you're aware of, just came out recently. It's, it's in its infancy. The point of that was to bring up some issues and say, "We need to study this further." However, in that, they talk a lot about next-generation classes. They've studied, they've studied throughout the country what top schools in the country are doing, and these, these next-generation classrooms can move, in the sense, you can move the walls. It's not just a square box with chairs and desks in it anymore. It's, it's much more interactive. And that actually requires more square footage per student. They've also done their school enrollment, enrollment projections, and there are proposed, or there are projected increases in the middle schools and in the high school over an eight-year and 10-year period, respectively. And the BT recently approved a $200,000 Cardinal Stadium feasibility study for improvements to the stadium. They talked about looking at traffic improvements, and that plan, just in concept, includes a fieldhouse. And as I mentioned, there is no ability to add floor area. So that's something that is of concern about what we are doing with the high school So the proposed increase, you can see on this last column here, here on the right, over what the underlying zone is. So right now, the floor area that is permitted for educational institutions in residential zones is the same as it is for residential structures. It's, that holds true for height, for setbacks, and all of the other bulk regulations, except for in the two and the four-acre zone, which are, again, in the back country. The, the .075 in the RA4 and the .15 in the R2, those, that increase in those zones was done by the Planning and Zoning Commission in the 1990s, because at that time, there was no floor area in restriction in those zones at all. So they said, "Jeez, we've got these big properties, and we better, we better make sure that we don't have something that is not at all what, what we want, so we, we should put some restriction on it." And then in 2005 is when FAR for residential structures was, was put in those, in those zones. So it's really since 2005 that we've had this bump. Now, interestingly, in the RA4 zone, it's 20% over what is permitted in the underlying zone. In the RA2, it's about 67% of what's permitted. So you could see what's proposed in the RA1 through R6 ranges from 30% to about 18% over what's permitted in the underlying zone. There's no change proposed to height or setbacks or anything. This is, this is just about the FAR. And the reason we want to do this is that we want to protect the neighborhoods. And that may seem counterintuitive, because it's like, geez, we don't want these big things in our neighborhoods. We want to have controlled bulk. We want to have controlled density. Bigger buildings brings more traffic. However, I would argue that what's been happening across, across town, regardless of the zone, is that some schools, mostly the, not mostly, just is the private schools, have reached their maximum, some areas, and they've looked to expand their campus. So obviously, the, the big, the greatest example is Brunswick School, which is the most recent, purchasing, of course, the Tudor Jones property up on King Street, and further developing their King Street campus, which, again, was in addition to their Maro Avenue campus. And some of the other schools, Country Day, Whippee, Greenwich Academy, they've purchased homes around their campus with the, with the idea of demolishing those homes so that they can add the FAR, add that property into their campus, and be able to expand on the property. So the point of doing an FAR increase is to say, if these schools need to adjust and need to grow a little bit in order to be the best that they can be, it, doesn't it make more sense for them to have a little bit of FAR increase on their property as opposed to destroying the neighborhoods and destroying homes in, in a row of homes, if they're just going to have that FAR on the property anyway? Interestingly, in 2009, when we were doing the Plan of Conservation and Development, the Conservation Commission wrote a note to the Planning and Zoning Commission and said, "We don't want to have sprawl, these, these, when you, when you just keep chewing up the land around the schools. That makes for, that can really push things out. We'd rather see a greater FAR on those properties." So that's, that was the idea behind proposing the regulation, was to be able to allow these schools some ability to grow a little bit and to change a little bit with the, with the new next-generation classrooms. So in summary, the proposal is, is really just to reduce liability to the town and to protect the neighborhoods by, by making changes in the zoning regulations that protect the things that are of value to us. What's of value to us? Schools, neighborhoods, historic preservation, the community character. That's, that's loud and clear in the POCD. That's what we're trying to do here. And I would, again, just reiterate to, please write me a comment if you would like. If you're at home, there's my email address to the upper right, katie.delucatgreenwichct.org. And of course, come to the meeting on July 24th. It is important that we have that, have as much comment as we can on it, so.
Great. Thank you, Katie, for your extensive and thoughtful presentation. I know the board members have questions. I just want to reiterate a very valid point in terms of process and in terms of the file. So we've received considerable feedback from people through our email. I would encourage folks to resubmit your comments relevant to this subject to katie.delucatgreenwichct.org, so in fact, they do become part of the transcript and the record. The emails that are sent to us do not, unless, you know, we're boarding. I just think in terms of building the file on the subject matter for the members of the commission to see in terms of breadth of concern, viewpoint, and so forth, that be done. So I just want to reiterate that. Another point, I know the gentlemen here have several questions. You mentioned on that last point about the change would benefit the neighborhoods, because it would likely reduce the sprawl created by purchasing adjoining properties to expand. But just so I understand clearly, it wouldn't preclude the educational institutions if they were granted the additional FAR on their core property from purchasing additional properties?
That, that's exactly right. And also, I should note, in the Plan of Conservation and Development, it does talk about the town looking to do that. These are, these are not, the, the, these are, these are, we're not trying to go against it. They're mutually exclusive. We, if it's appropriate, the town should look to purchase property around schools, if it's appropriate. If you look at the floor area that's needed for Greenwich High School, that's a lot of homes. We're already down 74,000. So if you, when you look at the school that's in the most need, purchasing homes around the school is not going to be cost-effective in order to make up that difference. But that doesn't mean that that might not be appropriate for another school.
Thanks, Katie. I have a question, a comment, and a suggestion for you. The question I have, and again, I just don't know the answer, is must you do this by reason, so to speak? In other words, could you, I'm not saying you should or would, but could you decide that for the high school, we ought to allow them to come in and make a case for increased FAR, but we're not going to do it for the rest of the areas? Can you do that? Or if you do it for the high school, must you do it for all the other schools?
The, you cannot just do something for one specific property. That's called spot zoning. So within a zone, you have to have uniformity. However, it could just be for the zones that the high school is in, which is in, which is the R20 and the RA1. So you could, the commission may say, "We're not doing it for the other zones. We don't see the need," whatever the case may be. So from that standpoint, yes, the, the commission could do that. And just one more point on that is, the commission can break this proposal up, so they could take up one part of it, withdraw another part of it, approve another part of it. They don't, it's not one or, one or all. There's flexibility there.
That sort of leads me to my comment, which is the following. I read the transcript of your hearing. I read Ms. Tarkenton's comments, Ms. Spasiolitis's comments, as well as those who favored the proposal that you were putting forth. It seemed to me, and I'm just going to iterate before I make my next comment what Peter said, which is that we, as a body, have virtually, practically no role here. That may be unfortunate, or it may be very fortunate, but we have no role. Therefore, this is just the comment of one person. My take on it, which is my comment, is you have not made the case, at least in my judgment, with respect to the FAR. I think you have with respect to the other. And the reason you haven't is you haven't shown, if you have, what other considerations you've taken into account, what other, other areas, if any, or avenues, if any, are there to address what issues there are. How pressing are these issues in different places? Must all the regions be the same? Are there other alternatives which would address the issue? Mindful of the comments that are being made by those who are concerned about the changes that you are proposing, and recognizing that there are a lot of people that favor the changes you're proposing. So I, I guess my comment to you is, I think you have to make the case better, at least you would for me, if I were there, which I'm not. And that leads to my suggestion, which is really reiterating what this commission has already said, which is, I would think it is very much in the commission's interest to give this the time that is needed for the community to buy in or not buy in. When you have the kind of concerns that are being raised by a lot of people, more than seem to care about much, it would be, I'll, I'll use the word, I don't mean it quite the way I'm using it, but I'll use it, it would be politically sensible to give it time and to allow the people to have their say, to inform the commission. If I were a commissioner, I would want that. You're taking action which is impactful, or maybe. And suggesting you put it off till October or September or November is not, in my judgment, at all unreasonable. Quite to the contrary, it is what you ought to do. So that's my suggestion, for what it's worth.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good, very good suggestions. And I do, again, encourage people to come on July 24th. There is a lot more background information. I don't want to bog you down with all the numbers. And the commission may very well decide to do just, to do just that. So I, I think that depends on what happens on the 24th, but thank you for those suggestions. Excellent. Appreciate it.
Mr. Tonner.
I would like to second Mr. Litback's suggestion. Time is needed. It looks like the commission is pushing something through, and that's not in your best interest, or the town's.
Thank you.
Again, I want to thank you. I think there's clearly solidarity amongst the three of us, so eloquently expressed by Mr. Litback and Mr. Tonner, that we strongly favor additional time to accommodate not only understanding, but concerns about the proposal and its impact. So I know that you're just the messenger, and we're very thankful. You're a very effective messenger planner. If you could convey that to the commission once again, that we really strongly recommend on the 24th that they carry forth a longer schedule to evaluate the proposal. And then finally, this is more of a process question, and I see the special counsel for land use is here. But just in terms of changes to land use regulations, if in fact the commission adopts changes, what recourse does the community have? Is it, so is it through the judicial process, or is there a political process aside from changing the members of the commission, which we know how that's done? But taking the matter to referendum, if you could just elaborate a little bit, because I had several people ask me that question.
I appreciate the questions. John, one more.
Maybe you should come to the microphone, so it's part of our minutes. Maybe you should come to the microphone so it's part of our minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Wetmore, Special Counsel of the Town of Greenwich. The question, as I understood it, was what would be the mechanism for someone who does not like these text amendments to take? And that would be to take an appeal of the approval of those text amendments to the Superior Court.
So here's an interesting conundrum, perhaps, and I always defer to my legal counsel on board. Tremendous resource. So is it, how do I preface this? So let's say that happened and could one board, say this board or the RTM theoretically, take the P and Z to, I guess, court to appeal their decision? And how would that work when you have one governmental body essentially suing the other government?
Well, what happens when that occurs is the town attorney loses a lot more hair and he really can't afford that. You find yourself in a conflict situation in terms of who's going to represent who is really what that comes down to. The RTM, as you may know already, is not a legal entity which can sue or be sued. So you're talking about maybe some other agency of the town. But it would in essence be the town suing the commission.
Yeah, but John.
Yes, sir.
One lawyer can't let another lawyer get away without a question.
You haven't yet.
Isn't, but isn't the issue.
Yes, sir.
You're at the second. The first issue is, would this board hypothetically have standing to bring such a suit? My guess would be the answer is no, we would not. It would have to be a homeowner, a landowner, somebody who is affected by it. Then the question, assuming such a person brought a lawsuit, then the question would be, can the town intervene? I would think the answer is yes. And then the question is, how is that determined? And I would guess the answer to that question is this board would determine that.
To break that apart, for any entity or individual to bring such a lawsuit, in accordance with Section 8-8 of the general statutes, you have to be able to establish standing that you're aggrieved in an administrative appeal of this nature. There's two parts to that. I won't bore everyone. You're either statutorily aggrieved or you live within a certain distance of, or you're classically aggrieved that you have some legal interest that's being affected by the decision that the commission makes. In terms of the town, there's certainly a mechanism for, or anybody else, to move to intervene if you don't, if you're not the party that brought the case. But there's a five-part standard. It goes back to this Horton versus Meskell case that a court would consider and then determine whether you're an appropriate entity to intervene.
Yeah.
And it would still all go back to the same basic issue in administrative appeal of, you know, do you have standing as well to be there?
Yeah, but back to the question, which I think Peter was posing, which is, in
very good candidates.
that event, let's assume you have standing to intervene, because I think you would.
Dr. Bonheim, please.
Dr. Bonheim and also Ms. Peche. I spoke to her once when she was going for Parks
Yes.
The judgment as to what position the town would take or whether the town does intervene
and Rec. And I thought, what a waste of talent not to have her on.
in the first instance is, in all likelihood, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's why I'm
I have a question to you. Do you know the answer? And because I have not spoken to him at all, do you know what happened to the person that I had put forth, so to
posing the question, it would be a decision of this board.
To act on behalf of the town?
speak?
Who was that?
Yes.
Convergent. I know we met with one of them.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. And I think that's.
You authorize lawsuits on behalf of the town. That's correct.
I have no clue.
Well, no, it hasn't. That's why I'm asking the question of John, if you know.
Do you know, John?
Thank you both. Thank you. That answers my question. And thank you so much for your
What was his name? Patron?
And there was a lot of people. I was simply changed here, they were like, "Oh, kids,
time. So that concludes the presentation today. Item number six on our agenda is appointments and nominations. Mr. Tonner, I'm going to call on you to see if you have anything to report from our nominations advisory committee.
Nothing to report. We need to figure out a way to introduce some people so that we can.
Okay, Bob Harper.
regulations up. I don't understand why the RTM cannot sit and go in and knock it out if that's the sentiment."
What do you want to knock out there?
Mr. Wetmore is still here. You can ask him. Because he's right here. He's the guy that.
He's going to be free in a minute. We're just trying to organize. No worries, Peg. We're just trying to get our schedules.
He met with him on the 25th of June, I believe.
Did we receive his application?
I assume the answer is yes, but I don't know that.
I don't have it in my file.
Well, that's a little while you meet with the.
You would have received it from Peter Crumbine if he did.
And I did not receive it.
Okay, then we haven't received it yet.
Yeah, I did not receive it. So none of us received.
Then, you see, that way it goes through snack and then it comes to us. They refer to us. And then we sit down and we talk about it. But it's not because, it's not because of Larry that somebody goes on the board. We still have to nominate.
No, I understand. But indeed, we had this discussion, Peter, do you remember? I raised this at the time and said, no, Larry wanted an M D. And I said, well, we ought to have a course and think about where.
Yep, yep, yep. Absolutely.
And then I thought, oh, for this application, he told me he met with Larry Serna on the 25th of June, I believe.
Right.
And that's the last I heard of it.
Okay, well, apparently, if you haven't received it and I haven't received it.
I haven't received it either.
There's no application in.
But I share your point. What you're saying is that a little concern of mine predating your tenure.
Absolutely. Of course.
And I bother you. So I would like to know that because particularly with that particular concern.
I had the feeling that that might be so. And that's why I was looking forward to coming here and having the discussion and having you guys.
My feeling is the same as yours.
I just want to say thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome.
For the solidarity on this zoning thing, it's like, I live on Maplewood.
You're a DA. You're a part of the DA.
Yeah.
Do you live near the Stan House?
I own it. I live near it, yeah. And so I was looking at the same, we're by us.
The difference is.
They're in the house.
I'm sure.
I didn't think about it. They're very smart people. They have the teachers. I want to thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad that we were able to.
Stayed.
Service.
Definitely. I nearly lost it.
Did Barbara call Peter?
I don't know. I mean, I don't think she called him.
Whatever it was, I wrote him. And he wrote back and I said, "Oh, great. I will run into someone from down court and join your email friends." And he wrote me, "Hey, Sandy, even crash timing on Monday, now he's six. Red, the January, we'll also have him around." And he did. Did you have the meeting? He did. Met my friend this morning for about an hour, nine to learn, blah, blah, blah. Four terms starts to the 30th, and so all is set for coming here.
Sounds like he's interested.
Oh, you know, all is set. I bet Larry Cullen would build up. I'm just reading that now. All is set. I thought he meant all is set for the interview.
Well, certainly Larry can express his preference, but we still have the capability. So moved.
Without objection?
Yes.
Mr. Tonner?
Yes.
Okay. This is a resumption of the July 12th Board of Selectmen meeting, resumption from executive session where we reviewed one property tax appeal settlement. And for purposes of discussion and action, I'm going to ask our secretary, Ms. Hines, to read the item.
This is docket number HHB CV 16-6036184S, parcel number 07-1799S. It is for a tax credit of approximately $165,179 against future tax payments. If the plaintiffs were to have prevailed at trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately
So moved.
With that objection? This concludes the first month of July Board of Selectmen meeting. Our next meeting will be held on Thursday, July 26th.
I move. We adjourn.
Without objection.